One is gonna be table, two is gonna be table.
Welcome everyone to the Town of Wells Planning Board meeting for Monday, June sixteen. The first item for discussion will be to review the minutes of June second. Did anyone have any questions, additions or deletions? Page one, two, three, four, or five. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous. The next item on the agenda this evening is to report site walk results for Seaview West Campground. Are they here? Are their representatives here? Please come forward and state your names for the people at home.
Megan P. Felice.
Ryan Ianello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You have results for us, sir?
Yes, uh, in your packets was a site walk, uh, report from our site walk that was held on June twelfth at six thirty PM. It was sunny and nice and warm out. Uh, we had multiple planning board members there. Uh, the applicants were there and their engineering consultant was there as well. I was there and there were no abutters present. Uh, the area for the main DEP wetland restoration was well staked out. Uh, was described as being partly a rock slope and then partly a vegetated slope for the proposed grading in that area. Uh, possible fence on the backside of the basketball court to keep balls from rolling down there and people too maybe if it's that steep. Um, College Drive buffer was walked. All the existing trees were observed. It looked like a good buffer in that location. Uh, the southerly buffer along that goes alongside the cottage complex was walked as well. Uh, there were multiple sheds that were still within the twenty-five foot wide buffer. Uh, but that's because there's some, there was some discrepancy on where that property line was. The abutters fence isn't on the property line, so it meanders a bit there and the sheds weren't known to be within the buffer. Um, several propane tanks were observed as well as being very close to electrical meters. That was pointed out and that that might be a, a propane code issued to be resolved. Um, utility poles were also located within twenty-five foot buffer area. Uh, there was some, still some ground remnants of ground pados in that area as well. Um, those are all items the board would be looking at for whether to allow in the buffer or not. Uh, the two areas of main DEP buffer restoration where there's just tree planting were observed as well. Uh, there's a, a small putting green that's to be removed as part of the DEP restoration plan as well and some trees planted. Uh, but the overall park appeared very well maintained and in good condition. The grass parking areas were all in great condition as well. So those were the items that I had remembered and wrote down from our site walk re- results, but if anyone has anything to add to it.
I think you had a great description of what was there. Any other comments from any members of the board?
Just question on those utility poles, are those owned by Seaview or are they owned by the utility?
I think they're owned by Seaview. That's, yeah, we, on the site walk that was discussed, I was assuming CMP had easements across them, but they're privately owned poles.
So what's next, Mike?
You have comments?
Yeah, we do have some determinations we can make. Um, now we've done results of site walk, um, they, we had some buffers to, to examine. One was the College Drive buffer, right along College Drive. Uh, it's different than the original plan, just called for like one rule of trees there. And they have comps of trees and, and some of the existing original oaks were retained as well. Uh, when the power lines went in along College Drive, some of them had to be trimmed back. But the trees are very nice and mature now and, and all look pretty healthy. Uh, but they are different than what was on the original two thousand and four proposed plan. Uh, so the board just needs to consider what's there and if that's a suitable buffer.
So I would move that the buffer that's existing is sufficient.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And the other buffer determination to look at is along that southerly property line with the, that abuts the cottage complex. And, um, the language in the ordinance for an RV park buffer is pretty open to the board's interpretation. It just says there shall be a buffer strip at least twenty-five feet in width adjacent to all lot lines. Um, I think in most cases when you see that language in the ordinance, it's talking about a vegetated buffer strip of some type. Uh, the ordinance does go on to say if there's a residential dwelling within two hundred feet of the park's boundaries that a, basically a visual screen is, is required. Uh, but the abutting property is a seasonal cottage complex, so that's a commercial lodging facility and not a residential facility. So a visual screen's not required. Um, some of the trees and vegetation that's there, it pretty much exists for the most part. And of course, the abutting property has a fence. Um, and they weren't required to put up a fence for a visual screen either, but one's there. Um, but we do have, um, utilities there, so the poles that are there, they, they're overhead lines. Um, I don't think they detract from the buffer quality at all and they're there. So it'd be very, very problematic to, uh, change that now. Um, there are some existing trees and vegetation in the buffer area that probably should remain. We typically will have a note on the plan that says all vegetation will remain unless they're dead or dying or create a hazardous condition and then you can ask the code office to remove them. And if you remove one, you might have to replant one, but, uh, that's a standard note that we can provide to you or to ATAR to put on the plan. Um, there's the, uh, yeah, a couple, I think those propane tanks that are also close to electrical meters, some of those might be in the buffer. And so that's something the board would need to consider whether those can stay or not. I think most of them have to move to get that separation from electrical meter anyways, so the propane.
And there, there also have to be certain distance from windows as well, so.
Yes.
So, but I think that's a, that's a code office issue.
Yep, or it's actually, we don't, the code office doesn't do electrical permitting or propane tank permitting, so it's almost like a state compliance issue, but it's.
Yeah, but they shouldn't, they shouldn't have them in the buffer.
They, yes.
They shouldn't be in the buffer, period. I mean, we don't, we, if you proposed them, we wouldn't let you do them to begin with, so they need to be moved out of the buffer.
Yep.
That's not a big deal.
So Suburban propane has come out multiple times and knows that some of those are too close to the meters. They said it would be a three-year project for them to move all of those. And there really isn't any place that they can move them to because then it's too close to the other unit and then the other unit. So the laws have changed since they were put in there in the first place in two thousand and four. So that's something that was Suburban's, or it was main gas previously when they put them there. And now Suburban comes in, so if we have a tank that possibly has a, um, broken gauge, then Suburban will have to come out and move that tank. And when they do that, they're gonna have to dig a drench or trudge or whatever it's called to move it someplace else. But there's only so many places you can move it to because of what you said with the windows and the other units, AC units, HVAC systems, like all of that stuff comes into play, so there's not a lot of places to move it to.
You, you might have to go to underground.
I don't know if you can do that with those tanks. There are smaller tanks, they're not big tanks, and I thought you could only bury smaller tanks.
How, um, how big are the tanks?
They're less than seventy gallons.
They're very small cans.
They're little small cans?
Yep.
No, they're, they're hundred gallons.
They're not small, but they're not the big ones.
A hundred gallons, not a hundred pounds.
I was told you can only bury the ones that look like submarines.
There's a lot of tanks.
Let's give you a hundred gallons, okay. I mean, that, that shouldn't be a big deal to move. I mean.
Yeah, but there's no.
But then you're close to the other.
There's nowhere to move them.
There's nowhere to move them.
If you look at the plan there.
That's the issue, there's nowhere to move them.
You're gonna be close to the next unit that's also has the same issue.
So I believe their plan is to eventually move them all as they
Become expired.
become expired or have an issue with the gauge.
Or the gauge.
Mm-hmm. They're, they're kind of chipping away at the project.
Where are they gonna move them to? That would be a thing, where can they, where can they move them?
That, that's the thing, some of them are having to go to the side of the units. Um, they're really moving them to wherever they can to keep them.
That's why I'm saying that they may have to go underground units in the front of the, on the road side there. Um, how many are we talking about?
A lot of them.
A lot?
Cause it was the, it was because the law changed.
Right.
I, originally, I mean, they placed, the meters were there when the park was built, then the propane tanks came in. So main gas set them up next to the meters. So that wasn't a law apparently twenty years ago, now it is.
But. I, I hate to say this, this is a campground, correct?
Correct.
All those units can be pulled forward five feet and everything can be located on it, no?
No, because they have, um, sunrooms that are attached to them, they're skirting, they're completely unhooked and blocked and leveled.
It's, it's still a campground, so that you can meet the, the setbacks. I mean, that's, that wasn't designed as a permanent, uh, park, it was designed as a campground with movable trailer.
Those sites were always permanent sites that we're talking about. And they're also permitted, permanent structures now and permitted as such, so.
Right.
They're not movable trailers, they're park model homes that have their, their hitches detached.
There's no, there's nothing underneath of them.
Yeah.
At all.
It can be moved.
I mean, there's, there's, there's wheels underneath them, they can be pulled.
The, the cost of moving them is outrageous.
It would be.
You're gonna have to rip down the entire Florida room, you're gonna then have to, you, so I, I'm not.
But you see, you can move the tanks.
Uh, huh?
Yeah, they're, they're moving, yeah, moving tanks, that's, these are plans.
Definitely, the one place the tanks are gonna be able to go is gonna be in front of the units.
Yeah.
And if you go to the front of the units, I'm assuming you don't want that because you're gonna have a row of tanks in the front of it.
Right, but that's also kind of like a dangerous situation if someone, what if someone, like if they're driving and they pull over and they're having.
Then you're at ballards and all, so it's fun stuff.
Right.
I'm, I'm trying to be in the middle.
So I think. Yeah, no, no, I understand, this is, but this is the dilemma that we got handed to us. We didn't know that this was an issue until they came out and started saying, you can't have them here. Well, they were put there twenty years ago.
Right.
Not in the years that we've been in there, so we're just trying to make it compliant with everything, but it's kind of hard to do.
I try to get there. I think there's two issues, that some of them are in the right of way and then others just don't meet the, uh, the existing code.
Uh, what is in the right of way? They're in the center.
Off, off.
Buffer, you mean?
Yeah.
The tanks, yes. Some of them maybe, but also is the meter.
It's a, it's a, it looks like that.
The meter is also in that right of way, which doesn't make sense that it was in the right of way when it was built that way
There's something that the board has to.
and that was in the plans somewhere.
I, I think we have an issue, Mike, that we can't say to them, they can leave them in the, in the, in the setback. So they either gonna have to move them or they're gonna have to go to the appeals board and ask the appeals board for the right to leave them in the, in the setbacks.
Yeah, I think the, I think the meters, you know, that's part of the electrical utilities, like the poles.
Yep.
The meters are a utility, so that's something that the board could, you know, bless being okay in the buffer. But the propane tanks, yeah, it's a little different because it doesn't meet code right now.
And, and it also looks like some of the units are.
And, and it's gas, so.
Are, are, are any of the units in the?
No, no. The units are not.
Sheds are.
What?
The sheds are.
Sheds.
Well, if the sheds are, they, a- again, we can't do that, we can't say you can put stuff in the, in the.
No, the sheds have to go, for sure.
So you either have to go or you have to go to the, the appeals board, which would be the way to do it.
So we understand the sheds have to move and we've been working on that, but the, the line that we were originally staked out by someone,
Yes.
we don't know who staked it out, at the twenty-five foot line from the fence that we thought was the property line, we moved everything beyond that. We even saw stakes when we did our walk that were in the ground that said twenty-five feet and that was where we based our measurements off of for every single shed that we've already moved.
Right. So we, we found out.
And then when we came out, we found out on the site walk that it was gone.
On the site walk that that wasn't the property boundary, so we're going to remove them again.
But also it, we, it, like you said, it's not a straight line, it's move, it's a movable line down that whole route.
Right.
So every single unit will have to get measured and make sure it's.
So I think that the board would, you know, set up a deadline of some type of when all those sheds have to be out of the buffer.
Right. Right.
And if propane tanks aren't gonna be allowed in the buffer either, then there has to be a deadline established for when they have to get moved. And, you know, it sounds like the propane company is just putting it on like as, as things need to be up, I mean, and that may not be good enough.
Cause they don't have enough manpower to do it.
I would, I would, I would say they need to be, I, I, three-year timetable's way too long.
Yes.
I think if you get everything done within a year, maybe even six months.
But they don't have technicians to do that. Web, I've, Suburban is very, very difficult to deal with. I've been dealing with them for a, a while now and they're very difficult to deal with and they do not have technicians, enough technicians to come out and do that, that the technician that came out to set the propane tank for new units that we have said it would take that long because there isn't enough of them to do it. And they're the only ones that can, they're the only ones that can do it. It has to be a licensed person with propane that can move the tanks.
Well, yeah, it has to be a licensed, but that doesn't necessarily mean it has to be Suburban propane, it could be a plumber with a gas license.
It's their equipment.
But it's their tanks. We pay a rental fee on their tanks, it's a bulk account with Suburban propane, so it's all owned by Suburban. We pay one bill to Suburban, so they would be the ones that were responsible for moving the tanks and doing the customers.
Yeah, so realistically, to kind of get through everything, have you guys already had it restaked?
Not yet, ATAR is.
They're going to.
Is it ATAR or a TARA or whatever it is?
I feel so, we're better off doing an extension for sixty days, so that way you get restaked. You guys can get as many buildings moved as possible.
As far as sheds go.
As far as sheds go. Get with Suburban on, hey guys, worst case scenario, if the town's telling me to move all the propane tanks, how much time do you need? Then that way when you, you're restaked, everything's moved, you come back on the extension and say this is where we're at.
Yeah, we don't have to vote on that offer tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, that's why I'm saying instead of.
I was hoping to give them some, some guidance, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I said I'd rather have, ATAR come out, stake everything, you guys move whatever you can. That point you have an estimate when the extension, when you come back of, hey, we got ten more left to move.
Right, we'll know at that point how many days to move.
Then we can give a true deadline, then if you have the chance to talk to Suburban, which gives you more time,
Mm-hmm.
that allows you to come and say, hey, Suburban's gonna have all these moved by October. I understand you may not get October, but again, they, at least you have dates, so that way we can move everything along.
That, I know we had to have one of those tanks already removed and it was like eight hundred dollars for them to dig the trench and move it. So that's, and that goes on to the property, the person that owns that unit, so that's not something they're all gonna want to do.
So the unit owner has to pay for that.
Correct. Mm-hmm. They pay for their own propane, even though it's a bulk account, we charge them for that and then they will have to pay to have it moved and the lines to be rerung along wherever it goes and it's, it's a process, it's not something that's easy.
And it's, it's a process we've been chipping away at for two years.
For two years, thinking you got, since, thinking we have the buffer line correct.
Yeah.
You may want to talk to.
And we still don't know who put that buffer line out there.
You, you may, you might want to light a fire under Suburban because, I, you know, if the state gets wind of it, they're not gonna, they're not gonna give you three years, I'll tell you that right now.
Yep.
So even on that side of it, if, so you guys own the tanks.
No.
I know, okay, you guys lease the tanks from Suburban.
Suburban tanks. Correct.
Correct.
You charge the tenant for propane they used off of one account.
So they. Correct.
Right.
Correct.
You may want to talk to Suburban about doing one main tank with meters at each unit.
Can they do that?
Oh, they're talking a lot more.
If they've got a lot of time.
By the time, those all would have to be buried underground and everything else.
Well, at that point. That takes away where all the tanks are. That fixes the problem, yes, it costs a lot of money, but again, it's a quicker fix other than putting them all up front.
No, I. I, I understand that, I, I, I mean, our issue is, is that we can't just give a waiver on a building in a setback.
Yeah.
Yeah, building in setback, no.
No.
Utility, maybe.
Building, even the utility, even the utility, when they're making a move, they, they, they wouldn't let a guy have a generator in the utility because, in a setback.
And most of the time when we see the word buffer, it's meant to be a vegetated buffer.
That's right.
But in, in this part of the ordinance, it's not specific to that, so that's where it's open to your interpretation.
It, and it's still vegetated, it's just a small space that they don't.
And, and this park was built twenty-five years ago and these utilities were put in twenty-five years ago. So I don't know if there was not an inspection done within the twenty-five years of these setbacks.
And was the code difference there?
It's supposed to be done, an inspection's supposed to be done every single year on a propane tank, so if you want, if you.
I, I don't know.
I'm talking about the utilities.
No, we're talking about the utilities, now you're talking about us moving poles and everything else and meters.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the poles I'm not talking about.
Yeah, but the meters, the same, those were put in that long ago, so with the.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the meters, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but.
We're talking different meters.
Propane, it's the propane tanks.
I was talking about meters, he's talking about.
Yeah, no propane, yes.
We are aware that the propane tanks need to be moved, Suburban is aware that the propane tanks need to be moved.
Mm-hmm.
They gave us a three-year window, now we're finding out it's a lot smaller window and we will absolutely address it however quickly we need to.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Just.
How many year co, how many year contract do you have on that co, complex with them?
But it. It's, we've just always had it.
Yeah, you, there's other companies out there that would love to be moved in there.
Well, yeah.
There is, but it's a bulk account and then they would have to come and get two hundred and twenty propane tanks off of the sites and then.
Two hundred and fifty of them. Yeah.
Boy, I think they.
There's a lot of them that would do it in the heartbeat.
There'd be a lot of them interested in doing that, they love that account.
Guessing no, because Eastern Pro.
Especially this time of year.
Eastern Propane was not originally going to do new setups and they just decided to do it again. They said no at the beginning of the season and then they said yes at, like, a month ago, so there's, yeah.
Yeah, it's time to reevaluate all of it, so just let us know what we need to do and how fast we need to do it and we will get it taken care of.
But I think everybody's having an issue with technicians.
Yeah, it, that will be our challenge, is getting them to do it quickly, but we will, we'll attack it.
Yeah, you can investigate it and do a little research on it and when you come back after the continuance or when you're ready to come back,
Mm-hmm.
hopefully have a, yeah, a tech director.
Yeah.
Something more substantial than that.
Um, can we vote on the utility poles and the electric pole?
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah, if you want to take the vote, say, then.
I think we're all in, Josh.
No, at least with the utility poles, they stay in the existing location.
Second. All those in favor?
And that's, and the meters too.
Yes.
And the meters, yeah.
And the meters, is that unanimous?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we, we had a, a whole list of waiver requests that came in with the original application, uh, so we listed each of them on the, um, application or on the memo, uh, for the board to make determinations on. The first one was plan scale, uh, they're asking for a waiver to that for a site plan approval. The, the minimum plan scale is one inch to forty feet. And the scale plan that was provided, uh, I think it was one to one fifty. And for boundary purposes, that's nice for showing the additional nine acres, that's only a way to fit it on one sheet. But the as builds, it's just too small and, you know, part of what this approval is doing is, is grandfathering, or not grandfathering, but approving all that existing lot coverage, so we really need a, a larger scale plan. Like the originals were one inch to forty, uh, for all the grading. And so that's something we, we, you know, that for the boundary purposes, the bigger scale is fine.
So for the DEP violation, is that what you're asking?
No, this is for, for the plans that the board is gonna review and approve. The code requirement is a maximum scale of one inch to forty feet.
Bigger scale map from ATAR.
Yeah.
Correct, of what area?
So, so for the, for the, to the boundary plan, we'll go with the one to one fifty and then everything else will be the one to forty.
Yes, that's what we were recommending.
So I'll make that motion.
Second. Is there a second to that? All those in favor?
So it's a partial waiver approval.
Okay. That is unanimous as well.
Have you texted or have you emailed Chris about that?
Um, it was, uh, in our, in our last email, we brought it up, but with the results here, we'll, we'll make sure he knows.
For Ken? So the whole entire property need a bigger scale?
Yes.
Got it.
Yep.
It's just a matter of print pages.
Okay. Even though that part didn't change?
Yeah, just, it, it, the whole, the whole site's.
Well, it's the, it's the lot coverage is, that's changed that we're trying to document.
The, the whole site's drawn out on, on, in the computer, so all he's gonna do is just print pages, extract pages.
Right, there, okay.
We'll have to create a border and a new title.
A hatch line and everything, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Not, not too bad to do. Uh, next item was, uh, onsite soils, you're on public sewer, so that waiver's not even necessary, so we don't have to make any determination on that. Uh, the next one was the amount and type of raw, finished or waste materials and that's referring to, you know, dumpster locations. And you do have a central dumpster location that isn't shown on the plan and it needs to be shown on the plan, so that's a waiver that we recommend the board not grant and that it to be shown on the plan.
So you need a motion for that?
Yes.
So a motion that, that, uh, we'll have the dumpster location shown on the plan.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, next item was a capacity letter from the sanitary district. There's no change in the flow proposed from the site, so we recommend approving that waiver.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Next one, similar, uh, looking for a capacity letter from the water district. Again, there's no change in the use, so we recommend granting that waiver.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, next one was traffic data, there's no change in the use of traffic generation, so we recommend approving that waiver.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, next one was a waiver requesting for erosion and sediment control plan. Um, and we don't recommend approving that one because there is some grading and earthwork to do for the restoration plan. And they already had it on the plan, you know, silt fence barrier and that, so, uh, they already have it addressed, but they were asking a waiver for it, but.
So I made a motion that that would still be required.
Yes.
Second. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, the next one was stormwater management and, uh, that one we talked about at the last meeting actually. And we're just looking for a letter from the engineer saying there's no significant impacts due to the additional lot coverage. Um, so we're recommending not approving that waiver and I think they already knew they would do that.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, the next one was a request for a waiver of condominium documents and it's not a condominium, so that one just doesn't apply. You're not talking about converting it to a condominium.
Nope.
Okay.
That was a rumor that was put out there when this company bought it, but no one ever said that, yes.
Oh, no. Oh, oh, okay.
It was on Facebook, yes.
So that one's just not applicable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next one was a handicap parking agreement and we weren't recommending approving that one. It's a, it's a, it's one page that's within our application form and it just gives the police the ability to ticket people who aren't handicapped that were parked in a handicap spot, um, and that's part of federal law. So, uh, that, we were not recommending a waiver.
So I move that the handicap parking regulation's still a part.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, next item was outdoor lighting, um, this is one the board could consider. There, there is outdoor lighting out there that doesn't show on the plan, I think on the entranceway, there's some lights on poles.
Mm-hmm.
Um, not many and, and we haven't.
Downward?
We, we should show, show lighting on the plan.
Yeah, cause they could show the locations on the plan.
Show the locations, I'm not worried about that, and, and that they're downward lit, that's all, just to let me know that they're not adding lights.
They go like that, so they're downward, but we'll put them on the plan.
Yeah.
So the motion that, that, uh, waiver not be granted.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, the next item was innocent, in, uh, in, incinerating devices, there are none on the site, so we are considered that as not applicable. Machinery that produces noise near the lot lines, uh, we didn't see any on our site walk and didn't think there were any out there, so we didn't think that was applicable. I don't know if the board saw anything while you, I didn't recall anything that would be a noise generator.
There's, no, there's not any.
Um, next one was depicting and showing drainage facilities, wetlands, streams, water courses. Um, they already showed that on, on the plans, like on the restoration plan, they show the wetland limits. On the original plan, they show, uh, wetlands, there was, out back, there was a layer that was missing, I think. But, um, but for the most part, that's already shown on the plan, so we weren't recommending a waiver to that.
Well, I think, I'm, am I allowed to talk?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't know what the protocol is. I think in our defense a little bit, these plans were only showing the DEP violations. The site plan amendment, I think, was already something else, this was just.
Yeah, a TARA's.
To, for us to, this is the plans at ATAR, is it ATAR or AT, whatever, AT, yep.
ATAR. At.
That they came up with for us to do the DEP violations for you guys to approve. We didn't know all this other stuff we needed to get approved, so that's probably why you don't have everything that you might need right now, is because this was all about the violations, the DEP violations.
Yep, and on the restoration plan, it shows the existing wetland and proposed wetland edge, uh, but there's wetlands on the remainder of the site too
Correct.
that haven't changed at all, so that's just a matter of ATAR turning on that layer and some of it they already showed, but some of it.
Right. Is it because they, we didn't have to do anything there, they didn't put it on the plans? They only showed what we had to do?
Yeah, they could've just forgotten to.
I'm thinking they just forgot to turn on the layer in one spot, but.
Okay, okay, I don't know how this works, so I just didn't know if it was just pertinent to what we were dealing with or not.
Fair.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not requiring going out with a soil scientist and remapping and relocating, not, not proposing that at all.
Okay. Okay.
Just if they turn the layer back on and show it per the two thousand and four approval.
Okay.
Um.
I actually have all the original copies of all of these plans in the office, I could probably just bring those out for all of you, so.
Well, they have to show it on the new plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Got it.
Um, next one was, uh, to depict existing and proposed contours. Um, this is one the board could consider like a partial waiver on, you know, they show existing and proposed contours on the restoration area.
Yeah.
Um, so they satisfy it there. Um, do you want to see it on any of the other site? Um, nothing's proposed to be changed there. Um, they could, they could just add it for the, the LiDAR, but, um, that may be a little task for them to do. But nothing's proposed to be changed, uh.
I, I mean, the site's already built.
Exactly.
There's, there's no sense in spending money for, for that.
Yeah. So I, I.
I don't think, you can, can we waive it?
Yeah, you could, well, I wouldn't suggest waiving it, waiving it for the restoration area because they've already done it, they already show it, so.
So I make a motion that we keep it for the restoration area, but for the rest, it's not required.
Yep, so.
Okay.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Um, they were asking for a waiver for Article Six, which we didn't understand their waiver request, so, um, we weren't recommending doing it.
What's, what's a six? Not use?
Yeah, that's, the use is the use, so.
The use is the use, so there's no waiver.
It didn't make sense that they were asking for it, so we weren't.
I think they just asked for waivers for everything.
So I make a motion that that, nothing.
Yeah, they had.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, and their next one was asking for a waiver for showing speed limit signs and site distances and those are already on the plan, so there was no.
Yeah, so I, I'd make a motion that they'd still be required.
Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Yeah, then they just had a journal waiver to one forty-five seventy-five, which is our criterion standards for approval and that one didn't make sense either. Cause you can only ask for waivers for submission items and that's not a submission item, so. Yeah, if you deny that, that's, it's really not applicable, but if you put it to deny it, that's great.
So I make a motion to deny that.
Yeah, they did ask.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
And then lastly, we had just, had considered granting a sixty-day continuance. I think ATAR thought they could get things from.
Second.
All those in favor, a continuance? That's unanimous. All those in favor, a continuance, that's unanimous. You're all set.
So we have sixty days to move the sheds?
No.
Or just to.
You can move them back with the date when you'll have them all moved, so that would be.
I don't know.
It'd be great if you just moved them, that would be awesome, yeah.
It would be great if we just moved them and I might just start picking up propane tanks while I'm there. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
The next item on the agenda is majestic regency. They would like to consider an extension?
Yes, G O N E T Speed uh pulled out of that application process, but they still had some hotel issues that they had to resolve. One being they wanted to change some of the landscaping in the front, um they did go to the Z B A and got their mislocated building peel. So they accomplished that, so that was nice, but.
Good. So G O N E T's gone?
G O N E T's gone of the street.
G O N E T's gone.
Yep, they found a different location and uh so um yeah, the applicants were looking for an extension and we were really going all the way to like.
They're not here tonight?
No, no, I had to email correspondence with them and.
And we can't do this because we've made a motion that they have to come to these to get extensions.
No.
Oh, that was just for subdivisions, site plans, they can just give a written request, the board can consider it.
Okay.
It's nice when they come with it on the slide to like.
November third.
Yeah, because if if you remember from our site walk, they wanted to look at eliminating the the pine trees in the front, but they didn't know what they wanted to replace them with yet. So they were gonna talk to a landscaper and come up with a landscaping plan for a longer one. And they didn't think they'd have time to do that until towards the end of the season.
All right, we should.
I'm not okay with November third.
No.
No. Sixty days.
Sixty days?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. The next, as well as the Gunkwood Resort, consider an extension, they're here.
Hi, good evening.
Would you like to tell everybody who you are, please?
Sure, my first name is Tel, last name is Patel, I'm one of the partners of the uh W O E Resort and you want to see?
And you need an extension because?
Uh we need our H T C uh S T C engineering firm needs some time to mark up everything, um and we actually had some questions on some of the.
So what are we looking for, sixty days?
Sixty days?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I think we requested thirty on the in the email, but.
Yeah, sixty should be about sixty.
Take the, yeah, take the sixty days, yeah, okay.
Did you have a couple of questions, though, you want clarification?
Well, should we go first?
Yeah.
I I second that.
Sure.
Second, all those in favor, grant the sixty day extension, that is unanimous.
Sorry.
I guess now you can speak David's head talk.
Um one of the thing, I think on the uh uh plan, I don't know if you have it up, um nothing. Notice uh one thing, then I guess when we walked through that, right, we said to put the gate at the ends of both of the uh paved road, I mean, sorry, gravel road. Um but I think on the on on the mark I had, you guys had it at the end of the paved road instead of uh, I mean, at the beginning of the paved road and not at the end of the paved road.
No, I think I thought we had talked about putting it down.
Yeah, below where the paved road ends, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, well, the marking had it on uh in uh the beginning of the paved road.
Was it just? Was it, I I thought the board had talked about gates on both ends.
We talked about two gates.
Yeah, one at the end of that paved road on that side and one at the beginning of uh the other side, basically.
So so we're talking here and here?
Right, exactly. Yeah.
I thought that's what we talked about.
Oh, okay, not not at the building front?
No, no, not at the, down where the the end of the paved road is and then up the other end to keep people down there.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, although I think on the plan it show, well, whatever was marked up showed like in the beginning.
If if he puts the dumpster up on the on the top there on the left, that'd be great. Just fence it.
Oh, that was a good spot for it, yeah, I know you were looking at the two options.
That's a great spot.
Yeah, so we're looking at, yeah, well, those two options there, um seeing that the backside, um it is sort of a nearer tree, so I don't know uh. What that does, if you put it near a tree and, you know, twice, while they're taking, if it hits the limbs or something, I don't know. Um but yeah, we're looking at two options, we haven't finally decided yet, um but we do have some questions on regarding if you do put it in the corner there. Like I think you had it marked up, that would have cut the curb, um because it's not square enough where they can go directly in there.
Yeah, you'd have to do a little bit of pavement right in that corner there.
Right, so is it, the question is, I guess, uh if you cut the curb, do we need the pavement or can we have gravel there, so that way, cuz there's gravel.
You could have, you could do gravel.
So just gravel side and the same thing under the dumpster, would only to have a a pad, we just put gravels uh with the, with gravel.
Don't just be gravel, I mean, long-term maintenance wise, the I think concrete pad is better, but but yeah, there's nothing in the code, you could just do gravel.
Okay.
Yeah, you just gotta put a fence around it with a gate.
Right, so the the other question is, I guess, when we put the fence around, do we need to uh buy for any permits or anything to put the fence around it or how that uh?
Have to be a six foot tall solid fence with a gate.
And and there's no permit needed for that there.
No, not for the fence.
And and if you're only and even on the gravel, he doesn't need any permits for the gravel.
No, just it has to be part of the site plan approval, but no building permits.
Yeah. No building permits needed.
Okay, so no permit, just uh need to mark it on the uh um the plan.
You just need to show it on on the on the ground, on the.
On the on the plan, on the show of the fence and the gravel, but no permit required to you perform either operation.
Yeah. Right. I would just show on the drawing that you showed as either paved or concrete at some point, cuz.
What that?
I I'd show it paved or concrete, not just gravel, cuz the dumpster company gonna drop them and just start pushing back on you. So your gravel's gonna get up to your fence, then you have to rake it all out.
Yeah, so on the plan, you'd wanna label it gravel or concrete or pavement, so that if you change in the future, you don't have to come back to us.
Or either, okay. Okay, so put icy ways in there, okay.
Yeah.
And you're just gonna have to change your lot coverage, that's all.
Okay, um. So sign, I guess, we we wanna know the exact wording we need for the signs for the uh setback for these twenty-five feet, which we're cutting.
Oh, for the twenty-five foot buffer?
Yeah, so um I think you guys, you haven't even know, but you know, no cut, you know, this stuff proper sign, but I'm not sure exactly, you know, it's from the wording we need on it.
I can send you some, I can send you some pictures of other ones that that have worked.
Okay, so yeah, just wanna make sure we use the right wording, you know, take them wrong, so. And it's only board application for that road in the back, right, uh we had talked about we need to find one, but I think uh. You had mentioned that we would uh get recommendation from the fire chief and we have not received that, so.
Oh, you still haven't got that from the fire chief, okay.
No, I don't know if we should reach out directly or you guys, uh if anyone from the board can reach out.
Because I think you already contacted them directly once yourself, yeah.
Yeah, um yeah, so we haven't heard back, so I don't, I guess, we'll try again for that, um.
Okay. I'll check with them on that.
Hope my call. They've been busy.
And that's all about if a question that I think on it, so.
Well then, you're all set and you have a sixty day extension.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Take care. Have a good night. The next item on the agenda this evening is Starbucks. They would like to consider an extension because they're waiting for additional permits.
D E P and D O T on that one.
So do we do a uh extension till they receive the the permit?
Yeah, it's a total unknown, so that's what we recommend, is just once they get their permits, they.
Go forward, Steve.
So I make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. And the next item on the agenda is basically the same thing for Wells Plaza, would someone like to make the same motion?
Make the same motion, second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. And the next item on the agenda is Drake Station. They would like to consider an extension, have they requested a certain period of time? They're here, so for the record, would you like to tell everybody who you are, please?
Benjamin Mags, Wells resident.
Welcome.
And you would like an extension, sir?
Sixty days, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. You're all set, sir. Have a good night.
Thanks.
And then we have other business, Mike?
Yeah, we had a couple of um, I did a separate memos for each of the previous default notice states. Um I'm still working on a final memo for all the other items of our original default notice. Um I should have that done this week, but um we previously resolved the fire protection issue, they got both the fire ponds up and going. And they had a buffer default on lot fifty-four, that's the multifamily lot, and they've done a replanting plan of that and planted. And we have a performance guarantee for true replacement if they die. Um and they've actually resolved ninety-nine percent or so of the defaults that they had going back year and a half or so, two years. Uh but I didn't have the memo done for tonight's meeting on that, so that was a update on that.
So they're still in default, but not as severely as they were.
Um, there's only one item, I just, I I was gonna, I was almost through the memo for that, saying they were completely out of the fall and that they'd be coming back on their amendment soon.
So that would be my question, they can't do anything yet, correct?
Yeah, there's one, one more item, it was uh to record the public easement across the open space. I I had missed that one in my earlier conversations with them and looked back, I thought we had. Done it the same time we accepted the fire easement to the fire pond, but I did not find it recorded and didn't find it in the board's selectment memo. So um that's the only item left on their original defaults.
So any of the work that's going on there now has nothing to do with it, this is all stuff that's that's already been approved.
Correct, of all, their current work has been on lot fifty-four, cuz they're they're, they've resolved the buffer issue there, so now they can get building permits on that.
So my question is, is if they paid the town the money that they owe the town?
Well, we we had large performance guarantee funds, we haven't refunded any of it, cuz I don't think there's any left to refund, but.
So should they be giving us some more performance guarantee money before they continue on?
Prior to the last. I think we have, oh, we got more for the tree planting that I just mentioned, the lot fifty-four, so we got another fifteen thousand for just the trees.
Yeah.
But we have, I believe we have enough performance guarantee monies left for finished course of pavement, as-built plans. Which those are done at the very end, you know, the occupancy uh process, so uh we still have funds for all of that. But yes, I almost did that third memo saying they were completely out of the fall and then I realized there was one item left to do. Which as soon as I tell them about it, which I haven't yet, um they'll be on a board of selectmen agenda and get it approved, I'm sure.
Other business?
Um the only other thing I had in the packet was just a copy at the last meeting, it was brought up that maybe we should look at some of the elements of uh chapter one sixteen, flood management ordinance. So I just made a copy of our existing ordinance and threw it in the packet, thinking you guys would look at it and then a future meeting, we'd start workshopping items. Um but I think Steve provided some additional information, I mean, we can still take that information and just.
Well, I think I think everybody needs to take the this information and look at it, you're not gonna be able to to go through this all tonight, but.
Yeah.
Uh just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight, um this that I handed out in the packet, uh lists all the coastal communities in the state of Maine. And what their requirements are in terms of what they consider as substantial completion, um what the reset period is for um. The um monetary value, and let me just go over that quickly, cuz make sure everyone understands it. If you um uh have to do repairs, substantial repairs to a house that's in a flood zone. Uh you, according to FEMA, you cannot repair more than fifty percent of the cost of the structure. And the FEMA um rules do not state that that has to stay with you for the entire life of the structure. Um some towns, for example, like a Gunkwood, reset that monetary value after five years. Uh there are, there are, uh the only town that goes by that value the first time you pull a building permit. And then has to carry that value for the life of the structure is the town of Wells, uh the whole state. And I think that's a problem because um you can have a structure, I mean, you look at some of the houses on the beach, they've been there a hundred years. Um and some of them may be there another hundred years. Um you look at what today's value is, in thirty years from now, the value of that is gonna be substantially more than it is now. But they're tied into what the cost is at the time that first building permit was pulled. So I think that's one of the things, one of the parts of the ordinance that has to change, I think we need to get in line with. Uh what the rest of the state is doing or even what our neighbors are doing, like the Gunkwood. And I highlighted that in yellow, um on the uh on the sheet there, it's in yellow, um one of the pages. So you can take a look at that, the um. The other issue um that we have, that I brought up last week, was the um discussion about the elevation of utilities. Um uh electrical connections at or above um the flood elevation. The town of Wells says you have to be a minimum of foot above the flood elevation. Most of the other towns are at flood elevation. This presents a problem with um, for example, C M P, C M P wants the meter to be basically what they consider high level. Um which is five feet to five feet six. Um C M P's code of regulations will not allow you to put meter higher than that. However, the town of Wells regulations will not allow you to put it below the flood elev, has to be one foot above the flood elevation. So that's something that that I'd like to see changed too, one of the problems that I've found is that um. Not only do the customers not understand this, um I've gone to the code office and asked them questions about property and. It's taken them a while to get back to me because they don't really understand it too, based on on the different zones, you have the V zone, the A O zone, the A zone. Um so there's, there's a a lot of different moving parts here. And what um we've done here is is basically outline the um amendment. Uh that that the the ordinance that was amended July seventeen, twenty twenty-four. And that's this second packet here and goes through, it talks about the the pros and cons of what uh what we've got here. Now FEMA um allows you to get a appraisal on a structure, say, for example. You decided to do, replace windows in your in your house. Um and FEMA allows you to get an appraisal for that structure um prior to doing the work. Say two, two years later, you wanna um replace the porch on the house. FEMA allows you to go get another appraisal based on the upgrade that you did of the windows and then works off that fifty percent rule. Um the town does not let you do that and most of these, if you go back to the sheet, um it says definition of substantial improvement. Um most of those say uniform and basically that means they follow FEMA rules, the uniform rules, there are no changes to to that. So again, I think that's something that we need to look at. The last thing that we need to look at is the disparity between the what you're being taxed on a structure. And then what they're saying that structure is worth for repair purposes. And again, if you have a uh house that's valued at two hundred thousand dollars. Um and you're taxed on it at two hundred thousand, that doesn't necessarily mean that when you go to the code office for a permit for work, they'll say. Well, based on the fifty percent rule, you're allowed a hundred thousand dollars to work on that. What they do is they basically have two sets of books and say, well, that house is depreciated uh fifty percent. So instead of having a hundred thousand to work on it, you only have fifty thousand to work on it. I'm not even sure that that's legal or that would even hold up in a uh in a uh superior court. But it's something that we need to look at because I, number one, I don't, I don't think it's fair, if you're paying taxes on the value of that house. Town is telling you, town must base it on something, this house is worth a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand. Then they can't come back and say, well, no, for sense of repair, it's only worth uh fifty percent of that two hundred thousand. So that's something that we need to look at too and and Wells is the only town that I can find that does that. In the of the coastal towns in the state. So that in a nutshell is what what I'm asking you guys to take a look at and.
And I did ask the code office if, when we do a workshop, they could come in and say how they do it, because I don't do flood permitting, so. A lot of the things you're saying, I I haven't never done a flood permit, so I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, and 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 it's interesting, you know, I I have uh customers that call me all the time and. And uh one of the 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 complaints that I had today was, they said, well, I went to the code office and asked a couple of questions and I couldn't get any answers. And I said, well, it the problem, there's the law is so complex that they can't just stand there and give you an answer, they have to read through.
I mean, that's true on most of the questions, when you come, you, if someone comes into the code office, unless it's a very specific question, they can't answer it. I mean, even if I, it happens all the time, someone will come in and say, what's the setback for my shed? Depends on what zone you're in, it depends if you're not conforming on a record, depends on the size of the block potentially in some zones. It could depend if you're in a cluster subdivision, if you're in a rural zone, normally the setback's twenty-five, if you're in a cluster subdivision, it could be down to fifteen. So yeah, someone, usually if someone comes in with a question, they have to fill out a research form and it's very, it's always lot specific and sometimes approval specific. So yeah, so unfortunately, the laws have become so complex.
Yeah.
That you can't just walk in and expect an answer at the counter.
Now, the the biggest thing that complicates it is the. Now, the, the biggest thing that complicates it is the, uh, accessory dwelling.
Oh, yes.
And that just, you know, that just, just makes it worse. Now, I don't know too, maybe when we bring in this, this, the code for a workshop, I'd also like to, uh, know how we're gonna wind up, um. Uh, doing permitting for, now that the state has approved adding two feet to the height of the seawall.
Yes, yeah.
So, how that's, how that's gonna work, so.
Yeah, cause those are D, D E P to that new permit by rule, they, they have a lot of very specific conditions on it too. So it's complicated conditions on that too, even, a permit by rule is supposed to be a simple process.
Right, and it's not.
It's not, yeah.
No, and, and, yeah, I think, and one of the things too, that, that, um, you know, like a lot of questions, everybody has is, well, what zone am I? And I, I think, uh, it's just important that, you know, if they ask that question for the code office, code office can simply say, get on the FEMA website. And look it up, because that's, that shows you a great, great though.
We actually, a, a layer, a layer on the G I S is pretty good, it's linked to the state, uh, flood management office.
Yeah.
But you can click on the flood zone, it doesn't tell you what the elevation is, but it shows you the shaded line at least.
Right.
And, and then you could, if you, if you're not in it, great, but if you are, or you're close to it, then you can go to the FEMA maps and get the actual elevations.
Yeah.
But the G I S is a great resource to just know if you're near it or in it. Doesn't give you all the answers, cause you have to go to the maps for the actual elevations, but.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I think that's one of the things too, is we try, try and make it simpler. And number two, take away some of the disparity from the, the, the other towns in the, in the state, I think we need to, to all be uniform. I mean, the whole purpose of the code office is, is to have people, uh, you know, maintain and build their structures correctly. And I, I think in a lot of cases here, what we're doing is preventing them from, from doing proper maintenance, so.
Okay, how long, how long do you think you'd need to digest some of the information and do a workshop?
I, I, I've been going at it for a while, so.
If, if, if we have changes that we wanna get in November, we should do it sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
There's gonna be other stuff.
The deadline comes up quick, it's.
Well, there's gonna be other stuff coming.
And there's gonna be other things too.
Cause I know that, uh, the selectmen are gonna wanna get going on the, um.
A D U's and short-term rental.
A D U's and the short-term rentals and all that stuff, and that's gonna come down the pipe real quick.
So maybe we oughta workshop it next week, next meeting.
Before that other stuff comes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking. And we have a three week gap between this meeting and the next one, it's a five Monday month, so gives a little extra time to look at it.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Go ahead, huh?
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Nothing to sign, we're all set, have a great night, thank you.